Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda, and we do have one addition.
Mr. Chairman, before we approve the agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda that in the past I've said that they deserve more recognition than just being on the consent agenda, and that's when we have organizations that donate money for causes that benefit Clay County. So I would, Mr. Chairman, if you would be so kind as to read those two donations and can publicly thank them for their work and then we can...
Absolutely. The first one would be to accept a $700 donation from beyond the Yellow Ribbon for Veterans Service Volunteers Appreciation Event, and the second one would be to accept $200 donation from Baker Downer Westminster Presbyterian Church for work detail, so...
I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Well, the agenda...
The agenda.
Sorry.
That's fine. With the addition, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, approvements of the December 1st and 10th County Board meetings.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. To approve payment of bills and vouchers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Presentation of Emergency Management Certificate to Josh Ebert. Heather Winkleback, Regional Coordinator, Northwest Region Three, Homeland Security and Emergency Manager. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. I'm not Heather, of course.
No, I...
He's a lot better looking than I am. I just want to introduce Heather Winkleback. She's been with us for, what, three years now?
One year.
One year. Wow, yeah. Still a rookie, but she's a Homeland Security Emergency Manager, and she's our Regional Coordinator, and she would like to do a little presentation for Josh Ebert. He's finished his work as being certified emergency manager.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing this. This is a big deal. Joshua Ebert has earned his Emergency Management Certificate. It's not an easy deal. It's quite a few hours, and as he will attest to, most of the classes, if any, probably are not offered up here, so he probably spent as much time in his car as he did in class to get this. It's a big deal up here, and we appreciate it, and it should be recognized, and that's why I'm here, is to formally give Joshua his certification so that he can put it on his wall and be proud that he earned it.
Great work, so...
And if I could just say real quickly...
Sure. Step up to the mic and...
Yeah. Just real quickly, I'd like to offer a special thanks to Brian Green for sponsoring me. Without his sponsorship, I wouldn't have been able to go through the program. Also Kathy McKay, my Department Head Supervisor, who allowed me to take the time out of my and give me the flexibility to do it and complete it. It supports not just public health, but also all of what we do in Clay County. Working with Brian has been an honor, and then also my wife for giving me the time away from home. So, thank you very much, Brian. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you again. Okay, 2016 Sheriff's Office Vehicle Replacement Proposal. Brian, you're up again.
Good morning again.
Good morning again.
We missed us all, which is a good thing, unless you like us. Well, this year, we're pretty much the same as last year. A couple of years ago, we tried to average, so we have about 10 vehicles every year. Again, this year, we have 10 that we need replacing. Five of them are marked squads, and then we have three unmarked and then one banned. And one of them unmarks is a sentenced-to-serv vehicle. We have all the information in front of you, and the cost of the vehicles and internal service funds to cover the cost. Again, this year, we'll have excess of a little over $60,000 that we return back into internal service.
So once again, thank goodness for the internal service one.
Yes.
It's a process that works well, so... Any questions for Brian on this? In the board's wishes?
I move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
That's what happens when you do your homework.
Dave's up next, and he's not here, so we'll go...
We're always early, though. But always get a lot. We are 10 minutes early.
Dave is on your debit card.
Why don't we do, we can do some committee reports. Wayne, do you have anything?
On Tuesday, December 15, we had advisory council for adult mental health. General business, we had a presentation by C.C.I.I., which is an acronym for Creative Care for Reach and Independence, and by ARMS, which is acronym for Adult Rehabilitation Mental Health Services. Both were very informative, and I do have handouts after the meeting if anyone is interested. Agency reports from Clay County Social Services, Moore and Police Department, and an interesting statistic is that of December 14, there had been 341 calls to the police department regarding suicide, and between 10 to 20 of these were successful. Well, that word "successful" is not my word. That's the word used by a person reporting. And so, mental health, suicide, these things certainly go together. Then we had report from Place for Hope, Lakelaw Mental Health, TransM, which again stands for Transitional Employment, Mobile Crisis Unit, Summit Guidance, and on Thursday, December 17, for Lake Agassy Regional Library, an executive committee meeting. We had general business and a financial report, a director's report, and the president's report. The meeting was very good, and all is well with Lake Agassy. Friday, December 18, for Children's Mental Health, I attended an early childhood incentive meeting. General business, we had an update on the Early Childhood Mental Health Network, which includes Clay County, Becker, Wilkton, and Otter Tail Counties, the White Earth Indian Reservation, and several of the school districts within those counties. Review of the 2016 West Central Initiative Grant Request, and then we had agency reports. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Frank.
Tuesday morning after meeting, I attended a budget summary on the diversion, but we're going to cover that today, so I think I'll just leave that go. We'll cover that during the meeting. Tuesday night, I went to the Clay County Plan and Commission. Jeff Eberhardt was with Coast Materials, wanted approval to open up a mining operation, and there was no problem, no opposition to it at all, and everything went fine. Wednesday morning, Clay County Extension Committee just went through the regular reports. We need a couple of new committee members. I think we're looking for some in the Comstock area, I think it was, wasn't it? We're looking for some in the Comstock area. So if anybody's interested out there and being on the Extension Committee, let us know about that. Thursday, Metropolitan Council of Governments, we redid priority list, because there's a lot of funds that, almost $800,000 in funds that are not going to be available from the state authority. They took some funds away, so they're going to do some re-prioritizing. Planning studies, all the planning studies that were planned may have to be looked at, I mean, are going to be looked at again and prioritize them. Also, we went over the bylaws, where we added West Fargo gave them to an extra vote because of the growth in West Fargo. After that, I went to the Family Healthcare Center. They gave a good report on, in fact, I think it's in the form this morning, too, on homelessness. Kim Seep gave a good report on homelessness services, that the help, they're right next to the Family Healthcare, she gave a good report on that. There's also, they also have nursing open, they have three LPN openings over there, too, so it looks like they have the same situations that we do, that there's problems getting nurses there, too, so... But they're moving ahead with their clinic in West Fargo and other than that, normal stuff. That's it.
Thank you. Jenny?
I also attended the six entity meeting on the budget proposal from the diversion authority. I appreciate meetings like that. And then in the afternoon, we had the land management meeting where we had an update on property management from Upperall Bren. There's just an enormous amount of properties, so there are logistic challenges with that, and it seems like they're addressing that wisely. Then I also had the extension meeting where Commissioner Gross covered that very well. We went over the staff reports and openings to the committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Kevin?
All right. I also attended the six entity update on the proposed 2016 diversion authority budget. Then on Thursday, we did have our diversion authority meeting, and diversion authority did approve the proposed budget to be forwarded on to each of our entities, and we'll be acting on that this morning. We also had, when the Colonel from St. Paul District of the Corps was at our meeting and expressed his feelings and gratitude for the work that we're doing and our ability to work with Washington and OMB, and primarily on this P3 project for the diversion, where we're into this public-private partnership. And it's, you know, I think it's that project in itself that has really put us above everybody else in our ability to get federal funding. I think the, with what's going on nationally and being able to get projects funded, our willingness to show that we can not depend solely on government to do projects, that it's hopefully going to change the way a lot of other things are also done at the federal level so that things can get done in a more expedient way. Later that day, I did attend the F.M.E.D.C., Annual Fourth Quarter Meeting, and they had, their presentations were primarily by the two-year colleges, and giving, you know, the message about the importance of those two-year colleges and how important they are to the workforce that we have, the workforce needs throughout our community. And I was glad I was there to hear those presentations, and, you know, for all young kids out there who aren't sure what they're going to be doing when they're leaving high school, there's nothing wrong with considering a two-year program like what these institutions have, and quite frankly, some come out of there with very good-paying jobs. So I think that's something that we need in this area to maintain our workforce. Mr. Chairman, then, oh, then yesterday afternoon, our Correctional Facility Committee did take a tour of the law enforcement center in West Fargo, and to, you know, get some ideas going forward on, in our planning for the joint, potential joint LEC with the city, and that was very helpful for us to be there, and we saw an awful lot. And I want to thank those folks from West Fargo for allowing us to be over there and take a look around. That's all I have.
Thank you. I also attended the diversion budget meeting. We had a pick meeting this morning, which Darren will be going over some of the issues. I had area agency and aging meeting yesterday, and we were wrapping up things as we transitioned to our new agency. Greater Fargo Ward Economic Development Corporation also, and there were some very timely presentations on the workforce issues that we're experiencing in the region. I think that was it for me. So Brian, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me add something here, and it's the expenditures and the revenues so far this year, and I know I normally schedule that on the board, but I was looking at this at the last minute, and I thought to try to give you just a little update before the end of the year, so...
Thank you, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. It won't, I don't think, take many minutes. I'd certainly answer any questions that you have. What you have before you is the revenues and the expenditures at about 92% of the year, and the reason why I say at about 92%, I think you all realize that there's revenues like further behind than the expenditures. Most of the expenditures are in for the 11 months, and I think, you know, this just gives you kind of a snapshot of where you're at on it, and I think it's fairly accurate. There's really no areas of concern on the budget. You'll see the court administration and the county public defenders are running a little ahead. That is really hard to determine. We can't control the expenditures there. The courts do, and I have requested from you an additional $5,000 in 2016 for each of those line item budgets. And if you jump down to, I highlighted one there, Emergency Management, where you'll see 133% expenditures, which could cause you, it's a smaller budget, but could cause you some alarm, but if you move just to the left and you see the revenues are at 229% to cover those expenditures, and that's granting that comes in. So that's quite common. And then the other one that I highlighted is the $63,000 unanticipated expenditures, and that's where we put in the expenses for the tax court case for Menards that you all have had a couple of closed sessions on, and are moving along there. I think everything else is in pretty darn good shape for the year, and I, you know, and I know Mr. Campbell is very attuned to this. Down at the total revenue fund, it's at 85% of the expenditures, depending upon what the revenues are at, 85 expenditure collections as well, and hopefully, we will have some room there at the end of the year. I know that's surprising to you.
No. Is 92% that's through November, then?
That is. Yes.
It's not surprising. It's expected.
It's expected. Okay.
Any questions for Brian on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple other things to report. The, I attended the six entity diversion information meeting as well. I did miss the land management meeting, as I did have a prior appointment. We then had a couple of meetings reference the public-private agreement that the diversion will be entering into with the Corps of Engineers. That's going to take a lot of time to get that right. We did have a luncheon meeting reference some finance issues with funding the jail as we move forward there, and the state legislation and different things that we're moving forward on there. Had some meetings with highway and personnel, Dave and Darren, in regards to some personnel issues. It seems like that's pretty regular, not with those two necessarily, but we did have a central administration managers meeting as well. And then there was, I already talked about that, and we met with the Colonel for the Corps on the project before the diversion meeting on Wednesday afternoon, I guess is when we have that. And then the diversion authority met as well. Had a home closing on Friday, and I think that brings the number to number 12 for the year, as I've told you before. So signed another purchase agreement or prepared another purchase agreement that we will sign today or tomorrow. So again, continues to go very well. We had detox interviews yesterday, which went really well. Detac Director, that we're getting close to hopefully selecting, or Kathy will select. And I went on that tour of West Fargo PD as well. We had picked this morning, and Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, Dave, come on up. 2016 to 2020 deficient bridge prioritization approval. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. How are you, Dave? I've got a couple maps, too, that you can take a look at. The first one would show all the township structures. There's two resolutions we need to pass, one on the township system and one on the county road system. Wayne, here's the... This is our annual funding kind of mechanism. The state needs this resolution list so that they can plan statewide on the bridge bonding money and the town bridge money that they've got set aside.
Sure. All right. Dave?
Just grab one.
One.
Yep. I think I've got about seven, eight, nine copies. I have too many copies, but just grab one and send it on. But this is the resolution list that we bring to the board every year. What we do is our bridge inspector goes out annually, according to the federal standards, inspects all the bridges. The only ones that don't get inspected annually are the box culvert, so it's concrete box culvert. Those are either on a two-year or four-year schedule. They're a little lenient because they're just a little bit different structure. There's not as many elements that can go bad and that sort of thing, so... But other than that, for the most part, all of our bridges get inspected annually, and some of them stay the same, which is very common. Some of them, we start seeing some degradation on the piling and maybe on the approaches and things like that, decks, railings, so for the most part, these lists don't really change a lot. We did have a little bit of movement on a couple of them this year. I think it was in the 2017 years on the county projects, County Road 68 and County Road 93, I think those ones bumped up a little bit, but for the most part, things stay about the same. Nothing real alarming here. This is just kind of our standard resolution list. Get approval, and then we send it in, and then once the projects, we get to the right years for the right projects, this list must accompany our plans for the state, so it's going to requirement by MinDOT.
Are these in our highway, on our highway five-year plan? They're all in the five-year plan.
Correct. We don't put township bridges on our five-year road plan, but the other ones are listed on there.
Okay. Wayne?
David, Kevin, can you answer this? For example, the second page, first bridge, local funds, $10,000 out of Clay County. Bond funds needed $90,000. Next one, $700,000. Is that state money?
Correct, yeah. The smaller numbers, $100,000 less, those are all box culvert replacement, so...
Okay, but this column here is all money that the state bonds every year for.
Absolutely. Yep. That's the bridge bond funds.
And that's, hopefully, they will do that.
That's true. The money's not guaranteed, yeah. We've been shooting, I think, every other year, I think, on the bond schedule, don't we get about $40 million or so, and the engineering group always pushes for $80 or $100, and they can spend that $40 million up in no time. And then recently, the big talk has been those budget buster bridges, you know, they have a couple of big bridges down in the cities that are $20 million plus, and they eat up a big chunk of our pot of money.
The difference is the local funds on the township bridges comes from the townships, and the local money on the county bridges comes from the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? The board's wishes?
I move approval of the bridge prioritization replacement plans for counties for 2016.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also move approval of the township bridge prioritization replacement list for 2016.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chair, I do have one agenda addition. Recently, I've been working with...
Oh, sorry about that, yeah.
I've been working with the DNR on a trail application. We did it last year. It's a grant application for a five-mile piece of that A.R.T. or the Agassy Regional Trail. Last year, we came to the board beginning of the year and had like about a $16,000 grant. We only were awarded $5,000, which is actually more than enough, because we don't really do an awful lot with the trail, but as a formality, they asked that we, I didn't realize I had to do this thing every year, but put the paperwork together, and I've scaled our request down a little bit. Between administration and maintenance, the request would be $9,675. More than likely, we'd get another $5,000. Last year, the only work that was done was a little bit of brushing work by Norman County. We paid them $197, and I'll be requesting that from the DNR, so if we could get approval on the 2016 grant funding application.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Do you also need a motion for the resolution?
Correct.
I'll also make a, oh, I suppose we need a...
Second.
Second, and the first one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
And then I'll make a motion to approve Clay County as a legal sponsor for the application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Darren, come on up. Next item is Human Resource Director Darren Brooke. Number of items to go through here.
Morning.
Morning.
It's that exciting time of year where we do the year-end HR stuff, so for the first thing is the grid adjustments for 2016. It's been looked at at 2%, and I have applied that to all of the grids so far. The county grid, the elected officials grid, the honor treasurer, and the Verwauer grades have all received the 2%, so that would be the one thing. Meal reimbursement rates, the proposal is to keep them at the breakfast $8, lunch $12, and dinner $17. I did do a little bit of research, and we are pretty much in line with the other colonies as regards to those rates, and they would not change from the 2015, so that would be the recommended 2016 rates as well. And I guess we could just make a motion to approve all of them at the same time, or do you want to do them separately?
I think we can do them all at the same time.
Same time. Okay.
Second.
Okay. The...
We need to vote on that.
We need to vote on that, so...
Oh, we do, separately? Okay.
No, no. Well...
We're talking whole page?
Yeah.
The five items, I was going to do all of them.
Yeah, go through them and then one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So the per diem rates, the IRS mileage rate actually just came out this morning, right before I came in here. That went from 57.5 cents per mile in 2015 down to 54 cents per mile for 2016, so you can write that in, I guess.
That'll, Mr. Chair, that'll be part of the motion, too, for that.
Yes. And the last thing I have is the 2016 furlough program. This has been a pretty successful program. We changed it a couple of years ago. As of last week for 2015, we had 797 hours used for furlough from 21 people, which was, came to about $18,000, a little over $18,000. It is a little bit lower than some of the other years. We're usually averaging about $23,000 to $25,000 per year, so it was a little bit lower, but I think the furlough program is a, is a good program that I would recommend taking into 2016 as well. two thousand and sixteen as well. So, those are the, usually the year-end items that we go into two thousand and sixteen with.
Thank you, Darren.
If you want to do that.
And we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on these items?
Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify, so the, this motion also then includes the same two percent for the elected officials as well.
Correct, correct. And I did, I forgot to mention, the per diem rates, it's recommended to remain at a hundred dollars per day.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Okay, next item is consideration of the two thousand and sixteen diversion authority budget.
Mr. Sheriff, I can kind of lead into that, and then I can introduce these three gentlemen that'll answer any questions that the Board may have. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, you heard a presentation last Tuesday reference the budget that the diversion is asking for in two thousand and sixteen, and the total amount is two hundred and thirty-seven million, five hundred thousand. And as you heard in the presentation, that this is being broken down into about seven categories. The largest expenditure designation is land acquisition at a hundred and nine million dollars, and the, I know one of the questions that was coming from you folks was, where is these, where are these dollars coming from? And that, the diversion had responded on that. The cash on hand for the diversion was fifty million dollars, the sales tax expected was about twenty-five million, potential state revenue of a hundred and fifty million, for a total of two hundred and twenty-five million. And then to bridge that gap, if in fact they do spend those dollars, they will do some short-term borrowing to equal the two hundred and thirty-seven million, five hundred. And I think, and probably Commissioner Campbell is on the diversion board, but if you'll notice, those are none of Minnesota dollars that are being requested in regards to that. But I will make note that there are some being spent in Minnesota, and one was the hardship buyout that, that you folks pleasingly supported and asked DNR for a ruling on it and things along those lines. I will point out that Eric Dodd in front of you worked very, very aggressively in getting that completed. I really want to thank him for his efforts on that, because it was a human relations issue that really needed to be dealt with, so. With that, I would turn it over to these three gentlemen to address any concerns, or that was very speedy address, addressing it, I guess.
Good morning, gentlemen, any comments?
The four of you are at the info session, so we won't repeat that presentation, but we'd be happy if you have any questions additional, we'd have to answer them.
Any questions for the general?
I have a couple of comments. One, in terms of the proposed budgets for two thousand and sixteen, you know, part of the concern amongst many on this side of the river was that no, no local dollars would be going into this project, and, and that, that has been protected, and the diversion authority knows that. The diversion authority knows that any money that is to be put into this project will be coming from the state of Minnesota. But I do want to acknowledge and remind everybody that, for example, work that the City of Moorhead currently has going on, on flood, flood protection matters, that they receive bonding from the state of Minnesota, will be included in the total project cost of the diversion project, and those will be in-kind dollars that will be applied for Minnesota's contribution. So, so technically, Minnesota has put money into this process through that, in terms of those dollars also being qualified as diversion project dollars, so.
That was a question that I had as well. I had been approached to, to see that percentage that Moorhead will have to put into the total, Minnesota will have to put into the total project cost if we were going to apply the, the projects that are in process and haven't completed towards that contribution.
I, Commissioner Mojo, I, this was something that I had talked with Chair Vanu about on the diversion authority quite some time ago, and I did bring it to the diversion authority board, and that was, and I think there was a, a time period, or time, a date and time that was stamped as any project from that, and Mike, I think you were aware of that as well, that any, any project that happened on the Minnesota side, I don't remember the specific date, but I think there was a specific date and record, that all of that work from that point in time on also qualifies, just like the in-town levies are today, that's being done in Fargo, will qualify, and those state dollars that went to those will be included as part of Minnesota's share. And I, I don't think there's any dispute amongst anybody from the diversion authority that, that that will be the case, so. But moving forward in terms of our voting on this budget today for two thousand and sixteen, it's anticipated, and even if we get into, Brian mentioned, there's a, a short gap in, in what they have money for and what they may have to borrow for in the event that everything is successful. That borrowing is done by the North Dakota entities. Minnesota is not even involved with that, in that borrowing process. So, it, this really is, to this point, being funded by the state of North Dakota, with the exception of the work that Minnesota is doing on the in-town levies on this side. You know, so, I hope that answers the questions in terms of, is there Minnesota money going into this, or are we, some might say, are we guaranteeing some sort of funding? And our funding, the only guarantee that we've given is that it would have to come from the state of Minnesota. And the final percentage that Minnesota pays will have to be part of the partnership agreement that will be done between the DNR or the state of Minnesota and the, the diversion authority or the host entities of the diversion authority, and, and the approval of the Corps, I'm assuming still has to be part of that process. So, in terms of how much Minnesota pays, I think, I think we all know it's going to probably end up being a governor-to-governor discussion to get to that level of how much Minnesota ultimately pays, but I, I don't know, hopefully I can help out there.
Jenny?
What is the thought, the percentage-wise, that Minnesota will chip in?
There will be a negotiated item, as Commissioner Campbell stated earlier. So, there hasn't been a real good conceptual discussion about that yet, as we've been waiting to finish kind of estimating the project costs, refining those costs, and then there will be a little, a later political conversation about that. But, you know, I think to Commissioner Campbell's point, there are some projects in the city right now that will be eligible to be credited for in-kind works. There's many that will not. Of course, a lot of our work from ninety-seven, from two oh three, from two oh five, I think we were still doing some things with mitigation, that will not be eligible. But we think that when you think of some of our bigger works, like Horn Park, Country Club, and maybe some of our work in the middle of town, we're likely looking at some credited activities, so TBD, that's going to be a conversation in the next couple of years, but.
And will those be federal, state dollars?
Those will be state bonding dollars, right.
Because we clearly do not have the capacity.
Correct.
To recoup what you do on the North Dakota side from sales taxes.
Right, you know, and I think going, you know, and being honest with the, with the people of Clay County on this, you know, I, I think that in the future, and this would probably end up coming through our watershed boards, but at some point in time, there's going to end up being a request on the Minnesota, Minnesota side to participate in the ongoing operations and maintenance, which is only right. But that, that in itself will be established based on the similar percentages of what it costs to maintain and operate that. That's a discussion that will happen later, and it'll be several years before it's implemented. I would assume that, based on the numbers that I've heard and what portion would be Minnesota's share, it would be a very small amount that would go through an assessment process through the benefited area, which would certainly be all of Moorhead. You know, you know, and my guess is that the proper agency to do that at that time would be the watershed district. You know, and I, you know, at some point in time, we're even going to be, and maybe Eric or Rocky can speak to that, but at some point in time, we're, I know we're getting an updated project cost, I think we're expecting that in January, and included in that is, I think they're even doing some studies on potential future O and M costs. And, you know, so if we know what those annual O and M costs are, and, you know, the numbers have been floating around, it used to be ninety, ten that we're talking about, and you talked about what was Minnesota's share, I think, I think we'll find out that it's probably something less than that in terms of benefit, you know. And, you know, so let's just say it, you know, just first, for talking purposes only, that Minnesota had five percent, well, then we'd probably be looking at the same five percent share in O and M on an annual basis. That's my, how I would see it happening, but that's, that's a ways off.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Mike, is the Moorhead City Council moved on this yet?
Well, our last meeting of the year was actually a couple of weeks ago, so we didn't have an additional business meeting yet this month to act, so we're going to act on January eleven, and I believe that's the same day that your watershed district is going to do the same. So, we'll support the watershed, be down there, help out in any way we can, and then our group also on that same night, January eleven.
For the Board's wishes?
I'd move approval of the two thousand and sixteen diversion authority budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Chair. Just one thing before these gentlemen leave. It was, and I think all of you five commissioners are aware of this, but just to reiterate it, it was a huge week for United States Congress and the President to sign a bill last week that really moved this project a huge step forward. There are still things that need to be done, but I just wanted everybody to be aware that that was a huge step, that there were dollars included in the budget that the President signed last, last week, and it's got to move through some processes yet. But there were some new monies, there were six starts identified, new starts for the Corps of Engineer have not been identified in the past year, so, just so that everybody's aware, there's, there's, there's a lot of things moving right now on this, so I just want you to be well aware of that.
Maybe if I can, just to piggyback on Brian's comments, more for awareness than anything else, so Congress did pass an omnibus bill last week, and it's expected the President will sign shortly, and then there's a period of time where the Corps has to develop their work plan, and the hope or expectation is that the diversion project will be named as one of those new starts and receive some federal appropriations. If that comes to fruition, the Corps will, will need to obligate those dollars by September of two thousand and sixteen, and they've indicated that they want to obligate those dollars on the diversion inlet structure, which is just south of Horace on the North Dakota side. And so, if that's the case, there's several steps that need to happen, you know, locally in terms of a joint powers agreement, amendment, in terms of signing a project partnership agreement with the Corps, developing, you know, the updated cost estimate that you referred to, and that feeds into a financial plan that looks long-term at, you know, revenue sources and, you know, the whole picture. And so, I think as Brian alluded to, there's a handful of moving parts, and the, the opportunity to get federal funds is really sort of ramping some of those efforts into higher gear, and so I think it's probably fair that, you know, you might see more of us, or some of us, I guess, in the next few months, so apologize about that in advance, but appreciate your continued support.
I guess I do have a question. What is, what do you see the, the future for the Dakota Board, the Metro Finance Board? I, I guess my major confusion on this is why we as an entity need to pass this, because, you know, if someone on the Minnesota side didn't pass it, we made a finance committee to go around that, so.
Well, I guess I.
Explain that a little bit.
Sure, sure. From my standpoint, I guess, you know, the diversion authority, let's call it the Harvard Club, or, you know, Yale Club, or whatever your favorite institution is, so that group was formed back in two thousand and ten through a joint powers agreement that's been amended several times, that, that joint powers agreement indicates that each member entity is asked and required to approve the budget. Last year, and, you know, potentially this year, we're in a situation where the Minnesota entities are unable to approve or have questions about approval because of the ongoing study by the Minnesota DNR. And so, because of that, last year, the Dakota Flood Authority, Flood Authority, I'm not sure of the exact name, was formed with the three North Dakota entities. And that was done primarily because of recognition that, you know, we wanted the diversion authority to stay in existence, that, you know, six-member entity, but all the funding was coming from North Dakota, and the North Dakota folks frankly wanted to continue funding things, and so the Dakota group was formed to enable the, you know, financial activities, financial funding to continue. And so, this year, both the diversion authority and the Dakota group have already approved the budget, along with Cass County and Clay County now, and City of Fargo and the Cass County Joint Water Board, and so all the North Dakota entities have already approved it. And so, in the event that, you know, Moorhead or Buffalo Red are unable to approve the budget, then I think the Dakota GPA still has a purpose. If the Minnesota entities are able to approve the budget, then I think that probably, you know, there's really not as much need for the Dakota, Dakota Flood Authority.
But do you see where there may be confusion on how that looks? I mean, if, if you don't come to Minnesota.
Sure.
If we're part of entities on that, how can you don't come to Minnesota to approve the, the branching off of another finance committee? I mean, that's what we are hearing from our constituents or IMs.
Sure, sure, and I think that was, you know, as we looked for budget approvals of the two thousand and sixteen budget here, you know, this month, we made, you know, certain that we wanted to get, get out to all six entities to make sure that you had an opportunity to approve the budget. In terms of, you know, the Dakota group and how it was established, I believe that was established by action of the diversion authority, so that it's handled at that level, so.
I, I'd like to also comment, too, on the, the, the North Dakota, or, or the budget that we approved, has contingencies in it as well. And the contingencies in it are that we still have to honor the workings that are going on with the EIS. So, any of the budget items that we have for two thousand and sixteen that fall within the parameters of, of the Minnesota EIS has to wait until that's resolved. The same goes with the federal lawsuit, that anything that is involved with that part of it cannot happen, and so there's the potential that if something comes out, or there's a delay in the EIS, or, or a change in the federal ruling, some of these projects may have to be put on hold from that standpoint. So, there's some assumptions being made within this budget that all of these things are going to be finalized in two thousand and sixteen, so. But until then, we're not saying that work is going to proceed on any items that would conflict with the Minnesota EIS, and there's, and none of the things are going to proceed that would be involved with the federal lawsuit. None of those things will proceed until those things have been resolved, even though the dollars for them, to do them, are included in the two thousand and sixteen budget.
Rocky?
Just wanted to make everybody aware of an event going on today, if you didn't get an email on it. At eleven-thirty today, Senator Hoven, North Dakota Senator, is hosting a roundtable, diversion roundtable, and invited all the congressional delegations from both, both sides of the river. Senator Heightcamp will be there, Congressman Kramer will be there, and I know staff from the three on the Minnesota side have talked about coming as well, but I'm not sure if there's any elected representation coming, but there will be a roundtable event, Mayor Williams, Mayor Mahoney, and Chairman Vanu will be at the table with the congressional leaders today to talk about the omnibus bill that Mr. Berg talked about, and what that means for the project going forward. So, everybody's invited to attend at eleven-thirty if they're interested in coming. Another action that maybe Mike could touch on is, City of Moorhead has appointed two people to be really the, kind of the, the front people to talk about the upcoming JPA amendment that Eric talked about, and going forward to the PPA signing that we need to do in the next few months, is Moorhead appointed these two to sort of start working on the issues like the cost share issue, what percentage are we going to do, so that we don't have to come back to six entities, you know, and have these kind of discussions, and then nobody's ever. ever face to face. So, maybe we can have some smaller groups that can work toward a solution and then bring it back.
Yeah, I would just add, there's a lot of milestones that are coming up in the next year on P3, on the PPA, a permanent and lasting or enduring joint powers agreement that goes beyond our limited joint powers agreement that we've had for the last several years. And to that end, Mayor Williams has appointed Councilmember Daley and Councilmember Hewlett to sit on a kind of informal working group with the city attorney, myself, Bob Zimmerman, the engineer, just to work through some issues. PPA is a really, really big deal, obviously for the non-federal sponsor like Moorhead, like Fargo, like the diversion authority. We've got a lot of T's to cross, I's to dot, and we want to make sure that everybody's fully aware of what's going on. So, we're going to spend a lot of time on that. We're happy to spend any time here, too, to brief this group. Appreciate your support over the years as well, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, thank you. Happy August.
Yeah, you, too.
Yeah, we did, yep. Anything else for the board this morning? Steve, anything for us?
No.
Vicki, anything? Ryan, anything else?
Should do her, sir.